It is 9:30, Tuesday, June 4th. We're going to begin our public hearing this morning with a roll call. Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Thank you, and if I could invite you all to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance. This morning, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Moved in second, that passes unanimously. We do have a few awards and presentations this morning. Okay, so, thank you all for joining us. This June, we proudly observe National Immigrant Heritage Month, a time dedicated to recognizing the contributions and spirit of immigrants who have woven their stories into the fabric of our society, from the earliest days of our nation to the present. Immigrants have brought with them dreams, cultures, talents, enriching our communities in countless ways. They've started businesses, built families, and shared their traditions, making our society more vibrant and diverse. Today, as we read this proclamation, let us take a moment to appreciate the strength, creativity, and hard work of immigrants who have helped shape our nation. Let's also renew our commitment to ensuring that everyone, no matter where they come from, feels welcome and valued. So this first proclamation is National Immigrant Heritage Month. Whereas each year, the United States observes National Immigrant Heritage Month by taking time to reflect on and honor the contribution of immigrants that have made to the economy, culture, and communities across this country. June is selected as the month for observing National Immigrant Heritage Month, and/or as, according to the United Nations Population Division, the United States is home to more international immigrants than any other country, with 46.2 million immigrants in the United States as of 2022. And whereas, where the, inside the United States, 969,000 immigrants became citizens in 2022 after spending years as lawful permanent residents. And whereas, Colorado's residents come from all over the country and all over the world, one in nine Coloradans are immigrants. They account for 33.2% of all construction laborers, 12.2% of all STEM workers, and 13.4% of entrepreneurs in the state. As neighbors, business owners, taxpayers, and workers, immigrants are an integral part of Adams County's diverse and thriving communities and make extensive contributions that benefit all. And whereas, formally begun in 1914, this celebration seeks to give immigrants and refugees in our country the opportunity to celebrate and explore their backgrounds, as well as create awareness on how diversity and immigration are both essential elements in our societal fabric. And whereas, Adams County's employee-led A Proud Affinity Group, Global Connections, provides a shared space for support and a greater sense of connection and community for those who identify as an immigrant or a first-generation child of an immigrant. And whereas, immigrants continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural landscape and educational, economic, and political vitality of Adams County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims June 2024 as National Immigrant Heritage Month and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of immigrants and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society. This is signed by Eva J. Henry, Charles Chaz Tedesco, myself, Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and Lynn Baca. We do have someone who will speak on this proclamation, but we are fortunate that she's not only a proud daughter of immigrants, but also part of our LGBTQ+ community today. And we also have a proclamation honoring Pride Festival that will kick off this weekend. It's a special time to honor and recognize the vibrant and diverse LGBTQ+ community and their many contributions to society. Pride Month is not just a celebration, but also a reminder of the progress we've made towards equity and the work that still lies ahead. It's time to reflect on the courage and resilience of those who have fought for LGBTQ rights and stand in solidarity with those who continue to work to advocate for acceptance and inclusion. As we read this proclamation, let's celebrate love, diversity, solidarity, and freedom to be who we are. This proclamation for Pride Month, June 2024. Whereas, Adams County, Colorado proudly acknowledges and designates this month of June as 2024 LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, celebrating diversity and the contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer, questioning, asexual, and plus individuals throughout our community. And whereas, we affirm that all individuals are inherently free and equal in dignity and rights, recognizing the invaluable cultural, civic, and economic impact of the LGBTQIA+ individuals in our country, state, and nation. And whereas, while progress towards LGBTQIA+ equality is evident, we affirm the crucial need for ongoing education and awareness to eradicate discrimination, prejudice. And whereas, our nation's foundation rests on the fundamental principle of infinite dignity, worth for every person, prompting Adams County to urge our community to embrace this principle and actively combat prejudice in all its forms. Whereas, Adams County remains steadfast in our commitment to fostering visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQIA+ individuals within our diverse community. And whereas, the celebration of Pride Month catalyzes awareness, support, and advocacy, empowering Adams County's LGBTQIA+ community while fostering dialogue, strengthening alliances, promoting acceptance, and advancing equal rights. And whereas, the Adams County All Children, All Families within the Children and Families Services Division of the Human Services Department has a tireless champion of LGBTQIA+ inclusivity, leading the Adams County being recognized as the first and longest-standing county government to receive the Human Rights Campaign, innovator in supporting and serving LGBTQ youth and families, and the "You Are Welcome Here" seals. Whereas, Adams County proudly hosts its third annual Adams County Pride Celebration at Riverdale Regional Park, June 8th. And whereas, Adams County has implemented various measures to support LGBTQIA+ inclusivity, including the annual refreshing of our Rainbow Crosswalks at county facilities, updating the employee manual with gender-inclusive language, and establishing all-gender restrooms at county buildings, supporting the employee-led A Proud LGBTQ+ Allies and Affinities Group, and displaying LGBTQ+ history banners in county facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, the State of Colorado, proclaims June 2024 as Pride Month and calls upon every resident to embrace diversity, champion equity, and work tirelessly toward a future free from discrimination and prejudice for all. It is signed by Eva J. Henry, Charles Chaz Tedesco, myself, Emma Pinter, Steve Odoricio, and Lynn Baca. At this time, I'd like to invite up Lindsay Melkey, Chief of Staff, to the podium to share some remarks this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Adams County community. Thanks for having me. Being able to stand up here and share remarks as we kick off National Immigrant Heritage Month and Pride Month speaks to some of the many reasons I'm proud to work for Adams County. One of the hardest and most important lessons I've had to learn in life is that two apparently contradicting things can be true. Here's an example. My father grew up in a war zone in Algeria. He came to this country in his early twenties over 50 years ago. He's an immigrant, and I've had heated arguments with him over the years, whenever America decides to try to close its doors on our fellow humans, yearning to breathe free, no different than he was many years ago. Another example. I spent 15 months fighting in a war in my twenties, along with my then-secret girlfriend due to "Don't Ask, Don't Tell." I flew this country's flag around in the back of my helicopter on missions, then mailed those same flags home to Gold Star parents of friends who died due to the, quote, "war on terror." I've lost 24 friends and classmates to those wars, while being told I was a second-class citizen by the same country I was fighting for and came home with mental and physical injuries that will always be with me. Some days, I am pretty mad at this country, and I love this country, and the ideals we're striving for, and I'd also be first in line to support those who want to kneel and protest during its anthem because we do not consistently live up to those same ideals. I could be considered a walking contradiction, one that does not fit neatly under any one label. Same for my father, same, I assume, for so many of us. And our brains are lazy, walking down the same path over and over, labeling and grouping situations and people, which can be dangerous, as it can lead to othering only further dividing us. So as we kick off National Immigrant Heritage Month and Pride Month, and every other moment where we celebrate the things that make each of us our authentic selves, instead of labeling and assuming, let's practice using these moments to recognize each other's many layers, each other's many ands, if you will, to learn from each other, to understand that we all generally want the same things in life, to care for those we love, to experience the richness and beauty of life, and to leave things a bit better than we found them, to celebrate each other's humanity. Please take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Melkey. I'd also like to remind everyone, oh, I skipped over Commissioner remarks. So colleagues, do we have any remarks or comments at this time?
I do.
Oh, Steve, you go first. Commissioner Odoricio?
I want to thank, I want to thank Lindsay for those comments. The United States is a walking contradiction in and of itself. You can love, support, and appreciate our nation while also questioning and scrutinizing and always seeking to make it better. And in fact, it's the people that I believe love me the most and I love the most that question, scrutinize, and seek to help make me a better person while also still supporting. And I think that we need to do that with each other, give each other the grace to be different, to have different opinions, and to make sure that we know that it's the contradicting and conflicting ideas that are the foundation of this country. And that's also why that diversity is so important. And what you talked about today is very important to me and to this organization, and I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank everyone out there for having the courage to stand up and declare who they are, who they want to be, and continuously seek to be better. Because together, we can do that, both as humans, as individuals, and as a community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Odoricio. Commissioner Tedesco?
Oops. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, you know, coming from a military family myself and having served in the military, you know, we see a lot of the PTSD and we see a lot of the actions that the government has taken and some of the actions of some of our citizens when military members come back from either what they used to call policing actions or war. And it's easy to stand on the sidelines and make those justifications. It's harder to stand up for those people and offer support. I feel here in Adams County, we've always tried to stand up and out for support. We've tried to recognize that, you know, we have a mixed society. And we need to be respectful of each and every one of our opinions and where we come from and what we want to do and how we do it. And sometimes, that's really hard. But we try to set up those environments, here at least, in Adams County. And I respect every single one of you, whether you've served in the military or you haven't served in the military. Your contributions to our community are important. And I really don't care how you worship. I don't care how you marry. I don't care anything about that. What I care about is that you care for your neighbor and you respect your neighbor. And when your help is needed, you provide that help. That's what I care about. If we can do that as a society, we can be there for each other. Everything else will fall into place. So thank you, everyone, for being who you are. I appreciate that, and I respect that. So thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you again, Captain Melkey, for sharing your family's story, a little bit of it, and a story about your journey, and thank you for your service. I'd also like to remind everyone that our Pride event takes place this Saturday, June 8th, at Riverdale Regional Park from 11 to 5. We have quite a full, free schedule of programming with food and vendors. And I keep hearing the parks are letting in a few more vendors. The last count I heard was over 90, so it's going to be quite a robust thing. Artists have been working on the displays for quite some time, roller skating, volleyball, all kinds of joy and merrymaking. And should you want to or have the spirit move you to get married, the Clerk's Office is doing an excellent job with preparing for Marriage Palooza with rainbow wedding certificates. So be happy to invite you and celebrate your marriage if that is what works for you. We have flyers you can grab at the checkout table in front. And yes, we have wonderful magnets as well and lapel pins. Please take one of both, share the word, and join us. And we'd love to invite you all to join us down front if you're a member of A Proud or you're a member of our immigrant or LGBTQIA+ community. I know that Nikki has some flags for everyone, and we can just take a quick photo. Okay, thank you for that pomp and circumstance. We now have time for public comment as well. Is there anyone signed up for general public comment this morning?
Chair, we do have one person signed up for today's land use case.
Okay, so just, the land use cases will be heard a little bit later in the agenda. So if you're not here to speak on a land use matter and you have any item of public comment, you'll have three minutes. This is your moment. Come on down. Okay, all right. So that concludes citizen communication. Moving on to elected official communication, which is us. Colleagues, do we have any general elected official communication this morning?
None for me.
Okay. All right. So then we do also have a All right. Um, so then we do also have a consent calendar. If anyone would like to make a motion, this would be the time.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to new business and county manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item for you this morning. This item was discussed in detail during a recent study session. There have been various moving parts on this project. It is a resolution approving Amendment Four Change Order Number Nine to the Agreement between Adams County and Hammond Infrastructure Incorporated in the amount of one million, six hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents for the Fifty-Eighth Avenue Construction Project Amendment Four Change Order Number Nine, two thousand twenty-four point two one six. Janet Lundquist is presenting the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, that's a longer walk than it looks like initially. So I apologize for the delay. This morning, I'm presenting on Change Order, uh, Number Nine. There was a couple mitigating factors, um, which led to this change order. The first one is that we've had a number of utility delays on the project, which then caused, uh, project delays, um, for our project. We have time limitations of when we do potholing, and then we had, um, a significant cost increase doing traffic control and flaggers, just to make sure that everybody on the construction site is as safe as possible. We also had, um, uh, design changes that were, uh, uh, instigated by North Washington, um, Water and Sanitation District. And, um, the combination of all of those things have led to this change order. As Noel mentioned, it's, uh, one million, six hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents on top of, or, uh, adding up to a total of, um, twenty-five million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents for a total project cost. I'm not boots-in-the-field kind of person, but I did bring some folks that have worked closely on this project. If you had any very detail-oriented questions, um, beyond, um, the conversation that we already had in our May seventh study session. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, do we have any questions for Janet? Then do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that... Where's the resolution?
Oh. I think it's either on, it's on the second page or on the screen.
Resolution approving Amendment Four Change Order Number Nine to the Agreement between Adams County and Hammond Infrastructure, Inc. in the amount of one million, six hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents for the Fifty-Eighth Avenue Construction Project be approved. Amendment Four, uh, Change Order Nine, two thousand twenty-four dot two one six.
Moved and seconded. This passes unanimously. Thank you for your work, and thank you for the robust conversation in our previous study session. Okay, that concludes county manager, county attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I would like to add an executive session today.
Of course you would.
And that would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute Twenty-four Six, four oh two four E for the purpose of, um, negotiating a economic incentive.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded. It passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to our land use hearings. Would you like a five-minute break to set up? Yes. Okay, so we'll take a five-minute recess. What time is it? It is nine fifty-three. Why don't we just go ahead and call it? We'll return at ten AM. Great. Let's reconvene our meeting at, um, what time is it? Ten oh one.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Nick Igleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'll be presenting the Prill rezoning. This is case number RCU two thousand twenty-two dash forty and is located at one two three seven five Brighton Road. Uh, this request is for a zoning map amendment, or rezoning, approximately a half an acre from commercial five to residential two. Here's a large aerial view of where the site is located, outlined in the center here. Brighton Road is directly adjacent to the east, uh, Hundred Twenty-Fourth Avenue, uh, to the north. Riverdale Regional Park, uh, is located towards the northwest. And then you can see these ponds and Highway eighty-five located, uh, to the east. Here's a closer aerial view of the site. Again, Brighton Road, uh, directly adjacent to the east. This is where the site, uh, takes access from. Here's the Hundred Twenty-Fourth. Then you can see the plat, uh, kind of to the west in the distance here. As you can see, looking at the aerial, the site, uh, does currently have a single-family home, as well as a few accessory structures located on-site. This area generally does, um, make up, uh, uh, single-family, uh, residential dwellings, as well as larger, single-family, uh, lots. And then there is, uh, some commercial located here at the corner of East Hundred Twenty-Third and Brighton Road. Sorry, it's delaying. There we go. Uh, so again, the property is Zone C five. This area, as you can see, consists of quite a few zone districts. Uh, the properties directly adjacent to the south and north are also Zone C five. Uh, across the road to the east, uh, is some C three zoning. And then each of our agricultural zone districts are located within this area that you can see here as well. And then some estate, or residential estate, uh, located, uh, to the south as well. Uh, the future land use designation for the site is mixed use. Uh, there's also quite a few, uh, different, uh, future land use designations that you can see here. Uh, mixed use is to the south and north of the site, and then across, uh, Brighton Road as well. And that really, uh, looks to have, uh, typical higher-density, uh, residential zonings, as well as commercial zonings. As you can see, there's some, uh, industrial low located to the west, and then some agriculture small scales, you get closer to the plat. And then some mixed-use commercial to the northeast and residential low, uh, further east. Uh, so when looking at the criteria for approval for a rezoning, we look to see that it's consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan, that it's consistent with the development standards, and complies to the development standards, and also that it's harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area. When looking specifically at the R two zone district dimensional standards, we look to see that it has a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. Uh, this existing property has twenty, approximately twenty-two thousand square feet. And also that the minimum lot width is, uh, fifty feet. This existing property has a lot width of a hundred and twenty-three feet. Here's some photos of the site. These are all looking from Brighton Road. This top left here is looking, uh, towards the west at the property. Again, this is the existing single-family home. I just wanted to note that the applicant does intend to continue to use this property, uh, as its single-family residential use. Uh, and then again, there are some detached structures located there with, uh, the garage located towards the rear of the property. Uh, this photo to the bottom left is looking towards the south. Again, there's some existing commercial, uh, towards the corner there, further south. Uh, top right's looking towards the east, across Brighton Road, at that larger, uh, ag, single-family lot. And then bottom right is looking towards the north with some additional single-family on the left there. During the referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the property. A total of fifty-one notifications were sent. Uh, we did receive one comment, and that was in support of the rezoning. And then we also did notify, uh, proper referral agencies, uh, for this proposed rezoning, and did not receive any objections. Uh, this did go to Planning Commission on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, there was no public comment at that time, and, uh, Planning Commission, uh, recommended approval by vote as seven to zero. Uh, and with that, staff does feel that this is consistent with the purpose of the standards and regulations. Uh, currently, being Zone C five, the, uh, residential use, uh, is prohibited. So this is illegal, non-conforming use. It's been there for quite some time. So rezoning it to R two would bring this, uh, into compliance by allowing that single-family home. Uh, and again, bringing the property more into compliance. Uh, it also complies with the development standards, and staff believes that it would be compatible with the surrounding area, uh, given the residential uses in that area. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning for RCU two thousand twenty-two dash forty with four findings of fact and one note. And here are those findings of fact and one note, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have any questions for staff at this time? Seeing no questions for staff, does the applicant have any comment or presentation? Come on down, introduce yourself, and if you have a presentation, great, or you can just make a comment.
Uh, good morning. My name is Michael Prill. I'm the owner of one two three seven five Brighton Road. And a quick presentation is, the only reason we're asking for this rezone request is just to take the property back to what it was back in nineteen seventy-three, when it was considered an R three at that time. And nineteen seventy-five is when it was changed to a C five. Well, there's no utilities or anything that can support any type of heavy commercial, you know, development within that area. So all we're doing is requesting just to take it back to a residential status as requested.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the moment where we'd hear, um, public comment on this land use case. So if anyone has any comment on the Prill rezoning matter, this is your moment. Okay, seeing no one come down or make an effort to come down, we'll conclude public comment. Colleagues, do we have any questions, comments, or is someone ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair. I don't have any comments. I move to approve rezoning of RCU two thousand twenty-two dash forty with four findings of fact and one note. Second.
Moved and seconded, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Good luck with your property.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Cody. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'm here today to present to you the Lowell Development Subdivision and Rezone, case number PRC two thousand twenty-three dash six. This case was heard at the April sixteenth BLCC meeting and was continued, uh, to today, and is located at five six oh two, five six six zero, and five eight two zero Lowell Boulevard. The requests before you today are, uh, one for a major subdivision preliminary plat that would create two lots, uh, for a total of twenty-three point three acres. Uh, the second request would be a rezoning of- Uh, the second request would be a rezoning of twelve point nine of that total twenty-three point three acres from its current zoning of commercial four to the proposed zoning of residential four. And here is an aerial view of the site, uh, highlighted in blue. Um, as you can see, it is located north of I seventy-six and to the east of Lowell Boulevard. Uh, additionally, with proximity to the Clear Creek Trail, the Clear Creek Federal Transit Station, as well as the Clear Creek Valley, uh, park across the streets, uh, to the west. And here's a, uh, closer aerial view of the site. Um, should be noted, uh, again, that's the request for the rezoning to residential four would just take place on the southern lot, uh, to the north. Uh, currently, the Spano Garden Center is operating and would continue to operate, um, uh, into the future. Uh, and the current zoning for both lots are, uh, C-four, commercial four. Um, again, just that southern portion of the lot would, uh, be requested to be rezoned to residential four. Future land use for the site is mixed use, uh, and that does, uh, conform to the request, uh, before you today. And when reviewing the criteria of approval for a major subdivision preliminary plat, uh, it should be found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the development standards, conforms with, to the subdivision design standards, has sufficient water and sewage supply, uh, no soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions, adequate drainage improvements. Um, and on that front, it should be noted that the applicant has gone through, uh, the clomer process, uh, with FEMA to address those concerns on the site. Uh, additionally, that it conforms with the zone district density allowances and is compatible with the surrounding area. And when, when reviewing the criteria of, uh, of approval for a zoning map amendment or rezoning, it should be found that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the development standards, complies to the development standards and is harmonious and compatible to the surrounding area. And while there, uh, the site plan is not being approved with the application today, the applicant has provided this conceptual site plan. Uh, this conceptual site plan does propose twenty-eight dwelling units per acre. Uh, this does comply with the, uh, both minimum and maximum density allowances for the residential four area. And here's the preliminary plat that was submitted by the applicant. Um, it gives a little bit better delineation on, uh, the rezoning request as well, uh, with lot one being to the south and lot two to the north. Uh, that rezoning request to residential four would just take place on that southern portion of the lot. And again, uh, that lot two to the north would continue to operate as the Spano Garden Center. There are additional district, uh, dimensional standards for the residential four zone district, including a minimum lot size of two acres, uh, with the proposed lot being twelve point nine acres. Um, additionally, a minimum lot width of two hundred feet, uh, in which the proposed, uh, lot has a lot width of five hundred and seventy-three feet. And some photos of the site conditions, uh, looking both north and south along Lowell Boulevard. Uh, the photo to the left looking north along Lowell and the photo to the right looking south along Lowell. As well as a photo looking east at the site from Lowell Boulevard, uh, showing the current site conditions. During the referral period for this case, we did send out, uh, notices to property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the site for a total of a hundred and three notifications sent. We did have one public comment, uh, noting concerns over the stormwater, drainage, and traffic. Uh, we also, uh, reached out to all applicable referral agencies. Um, none with outstanding comments, but the following referral agencies did respond, uh, without concern. And a planning commission hearing was held on March twenty-eighth. Uh, no members of the public were present to speak at that hearing, and the planning commission did, um, vote seven zero to move the application forward to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, with a recommendation of approval. And again, this case was continued from the April sixteenth Board of County Commissioners meeting. Uh, during that meeting, a public, a member of the public did provide comments on concerns over the mineral resource potential as well as the possible runoff from changes in the floodway. Um, there was discussion about a historic lawsuit relating to the mineral rights of the property, and, um, the applicants were asked to verify that mineral rights, uh, notification. And the case was continued, uh, to allow the applicants ample time, uh, to do more necessary research and update their documents related to those mineral rights. Uh, since that hearing, uh, they have provided an updated mineral notification form, uh, in which they found that the mineral rights were not severed from the surface rights, uh, as well as an analysis on the commercial, uh, mining viability of the site, showing is not economically feasible, uh, for this property and is exempted from the mineral conservation overlay restrictions, uh, as well as provided a response to the public comment. And based on the application, the criteria of approval, uh, for both the rezone and the preliminary plat, uh, as well as the supplemental documentation provided by the applicant in the interim between the two hearings, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning in preliminary plat, case number PRC twenty twenty-three dash six, with thirteen findings of fact and one note. And the findings of fact are as follows. And finally, that one note to the applicant, uh, just being that the applicant shall comply with all building zoning, fire, and engineering and health codes and regulations. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colleagues, do we have any questions for staff? No. Okay, uh, this would be a moment for the applicant to make a presentation or a comment. Um, come on down, introduce yourselves. If you have a presentation, great. Otherwise, a comment is also helpful.
Hello commissioners. Uh, my name is Marco Makovic. I'm the owner of the property and developer. Uh, thank you for rescheduling our hearing from the last time and giving us the time to prepare for this one. Uh, Commissioner Tedesco, thank you for bringing out issues with the mineral rights and, uh, ownership of those rights. Uh, so we addressed all those concerns and provided documentation to the county. I'm just gonna briefly go over them. Uh, the two main concerns were the mineral rights owners and, uh, mineral conservation overlay. So our attorney has found that we own the mineral rights. They were never severed from the property. That's why we couldn't find them originally. Um, the mineral conservation overlay, we have provided, uh, multiple sets of documents, and I feel like the most important one was that we did a study showing that the mineral rights, uh, the mineral deposits on the property are not economically, uh, mineable. The, the ratio is like five. It would cost five point seven times more to mine the, those. Um, and yeah, that's basically it. Uh, we've provided more documentation that I can go over, uh, and we also responded to all the public comments, uh, that I can go over if you guys want.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just, for reference, we all have a copy of this.
Oh, yeah.
And so that's the exhibit as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to mention? Okay, colleagues, do you have any questions for applicant? Yes, sir. Commissioner Tedesco.
Uh, thank you very much. I do appreciate this. I think it worked out really well for you because now.
It did. Thank you for doing that, yeah.
Now you don't have to worry about being sued by anybody but yourself.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, I just want to make sure that in all that documentation was presented and we have all the documentation we need by, for staff.
Correct. Those should all be included in the packet today.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, any questions for applicant? Yes, one question.
Oh, it's not a question for the applicant, but this is now gonna be, um, what was handed to us this morning is gonna be added to the public record, I would ask.
It is actually part of the packet. Um, it just came in late, so we provided you a, a hard copy, but the letter will be part of the land use case.
Right, because I would say that there is also a decision. I know, uh, one of the questions was if we are making a decision that we also can base it on these findings that have already been litigated and determined and the facts presented to us. I feel comfortable that, um, what is presented to us for us to proceed today. I know we still have a few steps in the process for us to see if there's any other folks that wanna, uh, testify. I just want to make the record that I, incorporating this information into the record is important. I think, um, if it was economically feasible to get the gravel, they would have done it.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, this is the moment for public comment. So if someone has public comment on this land use hearing, the La, uh, the Lowell subdivision and rezone, this is your time. Come on down, introduce yourself, name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Uh, my name's Dennis Arbogast. I'm, uh, live at sixty-three South Balsam Street in Lakewood. I'm here on behalf of Eddie and Carol Bone, who live at fifty-eight eighty Lowell, just north of this proposed project. Um, so, uh, I appreciate that there was additional effort put towards evaluating the mineral resources. That gravel extraction is, is apparently not going to happen. Uh, there are still issues and concerns about floodplain components. Uh, there was a clomer process, uh, that, uh, applicant went through. The bones were not notified during that process. And, uh, it failed to consider that the Highland Hills Park Project to the west side of Lowell, uh, did not do the master planned improvements, uh, in, for floodplain, uh, mitigation in that area. So, uh, this property on the east side is, is going forward with a segment of that master plan. But without having the west side or upstream side complying with the master plan, it's, it's not a compatible situation. The flood flows are broad and generally north of the proposed channel in this project. So it's, it's a disconnect. So that's a concern. Uh, also, I think that the project has an opportunity when installing multiple large culverts under Lowell to make part of that pedestrian underpass connection that would, uh, connect the Clear Creek Green Belt to the park and provide a safe crossing for pedestrians there. The current traffic report does not require any signalization on Lowell. So this, again, would, would, uh, provide at least a pedestrian crossing that, uh, would be safer. Uh, so, uh, it would be, I think, appropriate if the project included some tweaks to the channelization proposed for floodplain and also a, uh, require that if traffic warrants a signal that the project would take care of that. And that may be in phase two, it may be in phase one. I'm not, not sure which it would be, but doing that would, would certainly facilitate the project itself getting access to Lowell, and then that creates gaps in the traffic that adjacent properties, north and south, could utilize to get on to Lowell. Currently, there's no signals for a long stretch between, uh, at, at least, uh, the elementary school south of Clear Creek and probably sixty-fourth, I think. No signals in that area. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you for that. All right. Um, is there anyone else from the public who has signed up? Is there anyone from the public who didn't sign up? I don't think I see anyone here I don't recognize. But is there anyone from the public who didn't sign up who would like to take this moment to make a comment? All right, that brings it back to my colleagues for questions, um, and/or a motion. Do you have questions, sir?
Uh, yeah, and a motion. I guess I'm gonna have a question. I could look for a, a nod of the header. Uh, I like the idea of a crosswalk, but I don't think this is the opportunity. I mean, the developer could still work with the county and public works if there is an opportunity in the future for that. There's a difference between a warrant, which is a requirement based on engineering, uh, versus a want and, and, and nicety versus necessity. Um, so I would just, unless, unless staff steps in and says, no, we think that there is some additional conditions that we would need to add to this, which I'm not seeing or hearing, uh, I'm ready to make the motion with the notion that it's a great idea for a crosswalk. I think it makes sense for the neighborhood and the folks that are gonna be living there. And I would ask that the developer work with the county if that's a possibility in the future to do it and do it the right way, rather than having us address the issue here at this moment as part of this case. So unless there's some sort of issues debate, I'd like to make the motion.
I have one more question. Um, did you, do you feel like you're?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I do have a question. Um, the question was raised around floodplain planning and mitigation. And I was wondering if staff could make a comment on at what point do we require floodplain planning and mitigation in the site development process?
Morning commissioners. My name is Lori Clark. I'm senior junior with CEV. Um, and so in order for us to get to, to this point today, um, for approval for the preliminary plat, we required and approved, um, clomer, which is a conditional letter of map provision, um, that was thoroughly reviewed and vetted by, um, county staff, by Mile High Flood District, and by FEMA. Um, it has been through that process and has been approved, um, and is ready for construction. Um, so the, um, the clomer plans that were approved, um, are in conformance with Mile High Flood District's master plan for the area and has been deemed appropriate for this development.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, that was my only question. So let's go ahead with your motion unless there's something else.
Okay, I move to approve the rezoning in preliminary plat of PRC two thousand twenty-three dash six with thirteen findings of fact and one note.
My apologies. There we go.
Second.
Moved and seconded, this passes unanimously. Congratulations. Um, good luck in your process. I believe that concludes our meeting, and we all have to do a session upstairs.